Well, good evening, everyone.
Hi.
Are the mics on?
Yes, they're on.
Okay, the mics are on and they're on all night until we're done with the meeting. So, everything you say will be recorded. We're here for a special city council meeting, Monday, January 23rd, 2017. We're in the third-floor conference room of the DSAC building. Let's start with the roll call and determination of form.
Markstrom.
Here.
Drew.
Here.
Solomon.
Here.
Doyle.
Here.
Preston.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Laurenti.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Modrick.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Grab a form.
Okay, thanks. Now, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we'll go into general public comment. This is time for the public to comment on items that are not on the agenda, or, in this case, probably the only item on the agenda, but either way, it's a three-minute public comment time. Nothing can be added to council agendas during the special council meeting. And so, I have two requests. Dan Sefner. Microphone by the podium there. They're not a microphone, but a bit.
Brad, you told me I only have two minutes.
I'll give you three.
You're gonna give me three?
Yeah.
I'm Dan Sefner, President of Destination Rapid City, local Rapid City resident. For a little over forty years, I hate to admit that. I have to say that I go back and I think that in 1977, we tore buildings down on St. Joe Street. Yes, I had a full head of hair then. And we tore buildings down on St. Joe Street to build a parking ramp at that time. And I look back and I remember Laughlin Cleaners, and I remember the theater, and I remember Snyder Music, and there were all things that were happening. At the time we tore those down, we were also in the process of a new airport. Funding went from that lot to a new airport. The new airport was two or some, $2 point-some million over budget, and the money had to go to another avenue. You know, that's okay, I understood that at that time. That's 41 years ago. I know one thing, it's time for some action. We need to take some action. We need to get this thing out there nationally, locally, publicly. We've got to do something. It's just been long enough. And I take a look at all this and this history, we're in a great time in Rapid City. We are moving forward, we're moving forward at a great pace. I know there's people searching for that site. I know there's people out there looking. And I just can't say enough that we cannot drag our feet. We need to get things out there. Some decisions need to be made, whether that's tonight, tomorrow, next week, but soon, on what we do next. What is the next steps for downtown Rapid City? The ramps are oversold, we know there's no parking. Had a call not very long ago, a group of only fourteen, which is fourteen business people who want to move downtown. They said, "Dan, where would we park?" I have no clue. There is nowhere. If someone wants to come in at 7:38 in the morning, leave their car all day, leave at 5:36 at night, they work all day long, I don't know. Where do I tell them? Run up to Kansas City Street, go further up, go to Columbus Street, move your car? Plug a meter? I don't know. There's gotta be an answer, and we need to find it. And I just encourage everyone here to think about progressiveness, to think about what steps we make next, to be progressive on getting this to happen. I mean, it truly has been long enough. Had a few meetings today when people said to me, "Well, Dan, I wasn't born yet in 1977 when they tore those buildings down, or I was just born." Well, I remember it well. It's time. It's time to take some action and to move forward. And I appreciate this council having this meeting tonight and getting to where it is now. Getting to where it is now. We've cut the cord and we're moving on. That's really a positive thing, and I'm excited to see it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Balkin.
Thank you for letting me speak again. I have just a couple of notes here. I take into using these things. I'm really in the digital age, so it doesn't work as well as you think it does. You know, there's a couple of points I want to make from the last time I spoke to you. We know we want some parking. We want to take that choice location downtown and make it something special, better than it is now. The problem that we've had, and I've been back and forth on this project to do something on the corner of Sixth and St. Joe for over ten years, and it always comes back to that you can't build a project big enough to support building a parking ramp just on the back of that project. So, the only way to make it work is the city needs to fund the parking ramp. That's the only way it's gonna work. If you go back and dissect what's happened over the last ten years, it's always fallen apart in every case because that project there just can't support it. If we were downtown Minneapolis where your parking rates were four times, the volume of people is ten times, and the taxes you get are multiples, it works. But it's the same cost to build a parking ramp here as it does downtown Minneapolis. I would like to ask a couple of things, though. One is establish a process rather than just try and come up with a solution tonight. You all may banter back and forth, different ways to go about this, maybe even come up with some design solutions. I would say resist that need to do that. Come up with a process and let some professionals that have really done this, maybe in other cities, maybe someone within the city, do this for you, because you will never come up with a design solution or a project solution from behind the dais. I just caution you to do that. One thing I would ask you to do is decide what you want there, and then put that out to a development community. Do I want a hotel? Do I want some retail? Do I want apartments? Come up with that list of things that we want, part of our city, and let somebody come back and tell you how they would get it done. But you have to make it so that it'll work for a developer. What will work for a developer is if you provide parking, if you provide them all but a free piece of land, maybe it's leased, maybe you deed the piece of land over to them, something. But tell them what you want, say you're gonna put parking next to it, let them come up with the solutions, and use a process to get it done. This is an excellent opportunity for the city of Rapid City. We don't want to mess it up. We've had some fits and starts, that doesn't mean some of the things that we started weren't valid. Is that my time, Mayor? Thank you.
Would anyone else like an opportunity for public comment at the meeting? Okay, we'll go to item number one, which is a staff report from the Sioux Falls site visit. First up, Sarah Hansel.
Good evening, Sarah Hansel, with the Long Range Planning Department. Myself, as well as Joel Landine, Paulie Insomnion, and Dale Tech took a 24-hour excursion to Sioux Falls last week to meet with a cross-section from their development team. We met with their planners, their finance professionals, economic development. They were very generous with their time, very professional, and they shared very openly and honestly about the experiences that they've had developing numerous sites in downtown Sioux Falls over the past several years. I think we'll, between the four of us, we're gonna end up talking about logistics and some very specific things that we kind of took away with us. I want to kind of get the conversation started by being a little bit more big picture. Sioux Falls, like Rapid City, has a downtown master plan that they adopted. They're about two years ahead of us. They just adopted their plan two years ago. And when we first met with them, the first person we met with was their planning director, Michael Cooper, and he kind of gave us an overview of their downtown plan that they have and the goals and principles that are guiding them and how they're referring to their plan and using it to bring them forward. That was really helpful for me to kind of see how they're keeping this plan active, how they're keeping it a plan that's just not on the shelf. They are engaging the community on a continuous basis through what we have pitched in our plan. It's called the Coordinating Council. They're using a similar method and seem to be having good success with it. Something else that was a product of their downtown plan that's pretty relevant is the concept of design guidelines. They are working on developing those. They're not available yet. They are something that, as we were driving around Sioux Falls, they were brought up several times. You know, this, when this building was constructed, there were several residents kind of up in arms, not really sure about the materials, whether it's compatible with the buildings that are in the rest of the neighborhood. And they really talked about some of the public concerns over kind of what's being built downtown Sioux Falls and how the design of that is really impacting not just that site, but the rest of downtown. So, they strongly urge that design guidelines are an important component of moving downtown forward. They're going to be implementing their standards and probably reviewing them administratively. And I won't really get into the weeds on that, but I will just emphasize they definitely had some advice for us on to make sure that design is something that's considered crucially important to the success of whatever happens at each of these critical key sites downtown. They also have recently undergone a complete overhaul of their zoning code, something that Rapid City is very concerned with as well. We are working on the zoning revisions for the downtown area specifically. And like Rapid City's, Sioux Falls zoning code were based on sort of traditional zoning standards where the emphasis is really on the use and less on the form of the building. So, similarly, they have given themselves some new tools in the toolbox to be able to look more at form of building and not just the uses that are within them. So, while I'm up here, I'll just let you know that we are working on the downtown zoning revisions. We're hoping to bring those forward in the next three to four to five months. We'll be having some public engagement as part of that, and again, I won't really get in on the weeds on that. But some of their revisions that they've made to zoning have helped bring those, make those projects successful as well. Is there anything else I wanted to mention? I think those were kind of my big picture, kind of downtown plan concepts that they talked about and how they're using those, and then I shared some insights with the other staff here too, but I'll pass it along to, I think Dale's gonna talk next about the process that they use for their development sites.
Yeah. And I'll just thank Dan Sefner for bringing up the parking issue, because that's where I'm gonna focus on. We went to Sioux Falls thinking that we're gonna learn about their rail yard project, which is a private part, or private-public partnership with mixed-use development, that they're in the very beginning stages of trying to do RFPs and get ideas for four different parcels of Lyon down there. In our conversations with them, we found out that they're actually a little further along in their process with something very similar to what we are hoping to do with that site at the Sixth and St. Joe area. They are doing a parking garage, mixed-use, private-public partnership, where they actually went out for RFPs on this, and that's what Dale's gonna touch on, is the RFQ process, which is request for qualifications instead of proposals. They actually have one person that's in charge of the whole parking system down there. Finance has some involvement with the leases and that type of thing. What, which would be very nice, if you don't know how our parking is structured right now. My office has part of it, Public Works has part of it, and the Police Department has the enforcement part of it. So, it's really not centralized, it's not under the control of one person. This individual is very well-versed in costs of not only building the parking ramps, but also in maintaining both a surface lot as well as a ramp. So, in having conversations with them, you know, when I came to the city almost ten years ago, Brad Booth with the Police Department had a downtown parking plan. Well, at the time, and you've heard with all of our consultants that we've heard lately, that our parking is completely backwards in downtown, where we give away the prime locations and you have to pay to park further away. Everywhere else you go, you pay to park in the prime locations, and then it gets cheaper the further out you go. Sioux Falls has implemented that concept, as well as they have four different ramps. So, going back to Brad Booth's proposal, basically at the time, it was less meter downtown. We don't have the expertise to look at the parking, and at that time, it's where are the demands now? My takeaway really is that one of the first steps that we need to do as the council and as the city as a whole is really have somebody come in, a consultant, that has the expertise needed to not only look at our demands today, but our demands in the future. Where are the parking needs going to be? Where's the development going to be? We know that we have the old Imperial site that is vacant, hoping for great things there. Is the parking gonna be needed there? Is the parking gonna be needed on the west side? Everything that we see is currently, parking is needed on the west side of Main Street, or of the downtown core. It's not really needed to a huge extent where it's at. Bringing in a consultant would be able to look at what the needs are now. We have about 130 spaces on that lot, we overbook it, so maybe we only need 150 spots for the city to continue our leasing operations, to make sure that we meet our covenants for our bonds. But then if we have the developer come in and we tell them what kind of things that we're thinking about putting there, they can build in a factor to look at what the demand will be there. So, that way, maybe we only build a 300-car stall, you know, stall car garage instead of the 500 that we're looking at before. Maybe we decide that we just build a 200-spot there, and future use, we move to the west side or we go further east on Main Street or in St. Joe. But without that knowledge and without that ability to look at it, we could end up putting a garage where it's not needed, and it could end up sitting empty, and that's not something any of us want. In addition, they would look at the economies of how we are charging for our parking right now. Sioux Falls was very shocked at what we charged to park, especially for our metered parking. We charged 25 cents an hour, except in the ramp, it's 50 cents an hour. They charge $1.75 an hour. I know they have more going on. They have 2,500 residents living downtown, they said, and that number is growing for availability. But they also have the ability to take credit cards with their parking meters. We still have some of the old crank ones that had the clicking down. That was another shocker for them. When we were talking numbers, they have about $4.5 million sitting in reserves right now. Their parking enterprise has no debt. So, when they're going into this new venture with the developers, they have $4.5 million sitting in their account that they can already put towards their project. They may have to borrow additional money for it, or, you know, issue a TID. They don't know exactly yet what that will be. But it's, when they say that, I say we have $600,000 in reserves. And we're not keeping up with maintenance the way we should be with what we're charging. We're not in the 21st century, we're taking credit cards. The technology has improved so much and we're still kind of back in the dark ages. Their lease parking is $75 a month in their ramps. Rapid City has $44 for a covered spot, $34 for an uncovered spot. What's the right price? What are people willing to pay? We don't know that. And bringing somebody in to give us that guidance with the expertise is really the best option, I think, we can do right now, because I wouldn't hate to put a monstrous ramp there and end up losing money. Joel had me put some numbers together before he had sent a memo out on, at our current rates, how long would it take to pay off like the ramp that we have now? You're talking 35 to 40 years. And by then, you're ready to build another one. It shouldn't take that long to pay off your ramp, if that's what the city wants to be in the business for doing. So, I just ask that you keep that in consideration. Not sure exactly, cost-wise, on where a consultant would charge in this area. I know I'm talking to them, they can do a small little study or they can do a very elaborate study. So, it really depends on what direction we want to go. Other than that, I'll let Dale talk about the RFPs, which is also very exciting to me.
Thank you, Paulie. I'll circle back and speak to the parking component of what Sioux Falls does with their request for proposals and their request for qualifications. As both Sarah and Pauline have mentioned, the city of Sioux Falls has a very similar project. They initially went out with request for proposals. Most of you on the council are familiar with those, where you're selecting a consultant. The first time they did it on the project, typical request for proposal, similar in nature to what the city of Rapid City does in its project base. There were 15 different criteria, they talked about the details of the project. They selected a consultant, they ultimately negotiated with the consultant, and then decided that they weren't gonna be able to come to terms with it. Probably too much detail up front that they were trying to come to terms with, so they decided to pull back, and then they've issued what's called a request for qualifications. And that is a much simpler project. It's more or less finding a team that is qualified to do the project. There's only three criteria, I believe, that is evaluated. It's their history of doing projects such as this, the experience of the principals in the job, and then I think their ability to obtain financing for a job like this or a project like this. Back to the parking component, both the request for proposal and the request for qualifications, the city of Sioux Falls was very specific in those about what the parking need was. The city had already done their due diligence to say, "This is what we're building. This is what is needed at this site." I think that's been a mystery all along with what we've been going through in this particular location, is what is the need for parking? So, the city of Sioux Falls, with their parking consultant, had that information available and was able to have it up front, so there's no question or no further analysis needed in that. The city of Sioux Falls currently is negotiating with the person that they've selected. It's not known who that is, and through their process, they won't, the council won't know what the process or what the project looks like until the contract negotiations are finished. So, there's a committee, obviously a hiring committee, if you will, that is put in place to select the consultant, and it's made up of a cross-section, I think, of city staff and elected officials. Once they get through the process of hiring somebody, doing a joint design with the city, the city then hires what's called a owner's representative. And that is somebody that will work with the, typically the construction manager at risk is the delivery method that the city of Sioux Falls prefers to construct large projects like this. The owners representative, that's exactly what they do. They're there to be the voice for the city, and they all, all the project managers from the city of Sioux Falls that we spoke with said that that contract for that owner's representative will be paid for within the first few months of them working on the project, because they'll find ways to do things more efficiently and realize savings by being the voice. They speak very highly of that process. I think that's about all I have. Joel, I think he's gonna kind of tie it all together here.
I think the most important thing I took away from our visit is that for a project like this to be successful, it needs to be taken out of the political realm. And that may not be something you want to hear, but Sioux Falls, and Dale kind of alluded to it, their process, the executive, the mayor initiates, or the executive staff initiates these projects. The council doesn't initiate them. Now, that may be too extreme for Rapid City, and I certainly don't see a problem with council setting some general goals or some objectives or what you want to see as a general outline of this is what we would like to see with this project. But once it's decided to proceed with the project and they've established some goals, they, as Dale said, they do a request for qualifications. They said they tried request for proposals, but they cooled down request for proposals. Part of the reason, and when I look back at President's Plaza, and frankly, I have had more experience and lived with President's Plaza and that project longer than anyone else sitting up here. The first mistake that was made was the marketing, and I kind of alluded to that, not trying to get people from outside the area that had done these type of projects before. But the second mistake was in the request for proposals, the emphasis was on where are you gonna build and not whether or not you could build something. So, there was really little actual analysis given to the financial side of it, and the project was selected frankly on the conceptual drawings. And Sioux Falls talked about that, and they've said they've had that experience. And what they discovered is people select the best conceptual drawings, the biggest, prettiest pictures, and they don't pay enough attention to whether or not the project's feasible or the people proposing it actually have the wherewithal to eventually pull it off. And they said, in their latest request for proposals, they have specifically prohibited any of the applicants from providing any conceptual drawings at all. They don't want to see any of that. They want to make the selection based solely on their ability to perform and their past history of building these projects. As Dale alluded to, once that happens, once the person is selected, then they sit down as a group and they work out a conceptual, and they start to negotiate the agreements. So, Sioux Falls has, again, a selection committee, mostly composed of staff, although often it does, they said, include an elected official, somebody from the council. And if it is a large project such as their new arena, they will also maybe ask some people from the public to sit in. They're all required to sign confidentiality agreements. All of the people who submit qualifications are requested and encouraged not to discuss their project with the media or the public or with elected officials. And by this process, they've really de-politicized it. They have taken the selection out of people who would perhaps use their own political influence because you know who they are or because they're an important person in town, and it is encouraged them not to try to circumvent the selection process that's been approved by going to the politicians and trying to get them through political pressure to make the selection or to try to influence the selection. In fact, they discussed a project that they were considering, and the owner attempted to have some public meetings to start building pressure on the elected officials to intervene and say, "Yes, we like that project." And it actually, they decided and pulled back that they weren't even going to consider that project anymore and moved it back on the list to send the message, "This is not the way we want to do business here." So, while that may cause some concern that there isn't enough transparency, I think what you see is that you get the project built. They've been successful. They drove us around downtown. They've had multiple lots. They bought a lot of lots on North Phillips Avenue when they were trying to open up the entrance to Falls Park, and they have got buildings on those lots right now. They have a parking project in the center of their downtown that's very similar to ours that they're probably gonna announce to the developer this week. And basically, they've already negotiated the agreements. So, the first time the council is really gonna see it, the Sioux Falls City Council, is this week, when the developers announced, and they bring forward all the agreements ready to sign. And at that point, that is going to be the council's opportunity to weigh in on the project and see what's proposed and decide if they want to do that. And the nice thing about that is you cannot negotiate these projects and the contracts for these projects in public, at public meetings. That just doesn't work, and I think President's Plaza showed that. For one, none of these developers want to discuss their finances or, you know, where they're at financially and all that in a public meeting. You've already experienced that. They just do not want to have those conversations. And unfortunately, I think, rather than pushing that issue and having those discussions privately, we kind of let it slide to some degree. Think, again, we've learned a lot from President's Plaza. You know, the irony of this is they also told us, "We get a lot of outside help. We get a lot of outside legal help." They've hired Fabregat Benson or...
Fabregat Baker and somebody else.
And they changed their name recently, so. Huge firm out of Minneapolis to help them with legal documents, because they've done these type of things before. And I put that in my memo to you, that one of the mistakes we made was to not get legal help on this and somebody that had done these kind of agreements before. You know, in the last couple of months, I've done some additional research and pulled up some agreements on a public-private partnership. Most of those agreements are 40 to 50 pages long. Our master, original master development agreement was 10 pages long. And then we needed four addendum agreements, and we probably still weren't happy with the end result. You know, the other thing about all of this, the request for qualifications and looking at this and happening with a staff level and with a steering committee and things behind the scenes is that they had a misfire on their downtown parking ramp project, but they figured it out before any agreements were entered into. They figured out that what they'd originally envisioned was too ambitious, that the developer they were initially negotiating with did not have... they were initially negotiating with did not have the ability to carry it out. And they were able to pull the plug. And it saved everyone embarrassment. The city wasn't embarrassed. The potential developer hadn't been announced, so they weren't embarrassed. And there wasn't a lot of disappointment in the community because, you know, once you have those conceptual drawings and this is what we're gonna build, people take ownership of that. And when you say, this isn't what we're gonna build, it becomes disappointing. And everybody, you know, feels like they've lost something. Whereas if you have a negotiation and it ends up not working out in the way they've structured their process, they figure it out sooner, they're able to pull the plug with less consequence to that, and they're able to start over much quicker. So, you know, again, and that going back to the conceptual drawings, that's the problem. Once, once people have that picture in their head, it's hard to get that out. And when you have a conceptual drawing with no design work done, no market analysis, you know, no real understanding what the final project is gonna need to be, people get ownership of that. And I saw this with President's Plaza, and every time somebody wanted to change something, especially any of the exterior structure, it had to go to council. And then we all had to debate it and lament what was happening or if this was still what, you know, the project that was envisioned, what we had, what we had bargained for. And that's why the design and, you know, the, the concept shouldn't be developed in a public meeting where everyone is all, is gonna like some aspect of it and hang on that that may ultimately need to change in order for the project to be ultimately completed. You should have a goal. You should know what your goals are. And you should make sure that the decisions that are made to get the project built are still consistent with that goal, that you're not sacrificing those goals. So I think that's important. And I think that's a role that council can play is helping to establish those goals. But again, if you politicize the process in every aspect, the selection and everything else is in front of the council, I think you're gonna end up with another President's Plaza and you're not gonna end up with a successfully completed project. You know, I go back, the reason I brought up that they're, they're very open about hiring out owner's consultants, legal help, they have so much more staff support, just the number of people. They have a project manager for each of these projects. That this is their job is to get this project to completion. They have about three of them. In addition to the parking manager, in addition, yeah, an economic development person that helps negotiate the agreements. So they have so many more staff, so much more expertise on staff to pull these projects out, yet they still recognize the need to go out for outside expertise. The other thing, that's gonna be especially true for us because frankly, the people sitting here, we have so many day-to-day things that require our attention. It's hard for us to sit down. It would be hard for me to spend six hours straight or eight hours straight or a couple days trying to draft an agreement. And that, that was one of the comments they made about, you know, the legal firm they hired is something that might take them six hours to do, they can do in an hour. So while they charge a lot per hour, it's well worth it economically because it takes them a heck of a lot less time to do it and because they've done these things before. So I thought their process was really good. I think, you know, they have a track record of success in getting these projects done. And if you want to proceed with a mixed-use project, I truly believe we could get one done. But I think we need to seriously take a look at how they've structured their process and how they've done it and emulate that. And I think if we don't do that, we insist on doing it the same way we've always done it and we politicize it, I think that we will not succeed in building another project.
Okay, is that it for the staff report? Okay, then we could go on to item number two. Before we do, I'd like to ask the council if you have any desire to change rules on discussion or what you would like to do in that area.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules tonight since there's only one item on the agenda.
Second. Okay, motion and a second by Steve Laurenti. Any discussion?
Mayor, just a quick question on the suspension of the rules. Is there no timeline at all for each council member?
I think the council could define that. Well, I think we would suspend the rules regarding a debate is what I'm hearing from the... So yeah, unless someone specifies that it would be no timeline, it'll be...
So appropriate point of order would be my fear, sir, for done.
Well... Okay. Question answered.
Question answered.
Okay, all in favor of suspension of the rules, then say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, one, no from charity. And item number two is discussion of options for a parking lot located on the corner of Fifth and St. Joseph Street. This item was continued from January third, city council meeting. Floor is open.
Brad Evans. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a couple of questions for Joel. If I could try to listen, go ahead. And so, so if we take the political side out, no, no pretty pictures, you know, but, but then you state that we should have goals. Trying to figure out what, would you, would you want to back off and let the process work? What kind of goals are you, I mean, are there some size parameters or do you just fully stay out of all that?
Well, I don't think you have to get into size and things. I think that comes through the selection process. I think, you know, what you, you probably need to decide is you want mixed use, what kind of, you know, like, like one of the public speakers said, if you want some hotel, if you want some living, if living space is important to you with retail, then you kind of set those parameters, but you don't set sizes. I think it's important to have a general, I'm talking when you set goals, a real general, we want living space and retail or office space or whatever. You know, part of the problem, you know, this was really pitched as a mixed-use project. By the end, based on some of the market analysis, it was moving almost to just an apartment building with no retail space. Well, that really wasn't consistent with the initial vision. On the other hand, the developer needs to look at what the market will bear, and you can't try to force somebody to build something that a market analysis tells you isn't gonna work. Again, one of the problems was the market analysis was probably done way too late. Or at least, you know, the project dragged on so long, any market analysis that was done at the beginning of the project certainly wasn't valid probably by the end of the project. So they had to update it. So, you know, I think a general idea, building off somewhat Sarah talked about, we have this downtown plan, we have zoning changes that we have identified we need to implement. We potentially have design standards we want to look at. So I think if you're looking at just selling the property, do you really want to do that before any of those things are in place that you've said, yes, we want to adopt these to help further the development of our downtown? Because if you just sell it right now and somebody starts developing in three months or four months and this stuff isn't in place, it's not gonna be consistent with that plan. So I think you need to consider that as well.
Does anybody know if they're on their President's Rail Yard project, was there any parking on that site that's gonna get, be taken away? Is there any existing parking that they have to take into consideration?
Yes, there was.
It's mostly a rail yard. So, so I don't know...
There's some parking lots in there though, but they have like a big grand scheme of what they envision at different places. Some of it does take away some parking, but they have to figure out where they're gonna put the parking outside of that.
Well, what I'm trying to, where I'm trying to get at is, is I'm trying to approach this differently, of reading myself of all my preconceived notions as to how I would visualize that, but, but knowing that we're delivering somebody a site that starts with a hundred and thirty spots.
And Bill, I have somewhat Pauline said, and this is something I've told the mayor about parking, is that we need to start, for lack of a better word, take it outside the box, okay? We build too much in Rapid City because we own the land. And I'll give two examples, the Journey Museum and the fire station on Dias Avenue probably are not located where they need to be or located where we have free land. And the reason that we have focused on parking at this site is because we own the land and that's where parking is. Now, on the other hand, the one thing we can probably say for sure is that we know we have demand there for how many of our spots are there now, pretty much, because there's a short waiting list. What we don't know is if there's demand anywhere else or if there's, if there's demand beyond what we have now. But anybody that builds there is probably gonna also create some additional demand. So that would have to be factored in. I would not tie your hands by trying to lock yourself into a specific parking ramp or size of parking at that location now and leave it open if you want to, to negotiate with the developer to try to determine what the appropriate parking is. But a parking study would help determine what the actual need is there now and then the developer should be able, that's selected, should be able to tell you based on what they want to do or what their vision is, how much additional parking they're gonna need and then include it. But again, the other surface lot we have is a prime location. It's Eighth and Main Street. Maybe instead of focusing all our parking efforts on the lots we currently own, maybe we should consider looking, once we know where the need is, looking at other locations besides the prime corners in downtown, whether that means acquiring some property that's in need of redevelopment or that's outside the main core that would be appropriate for parking? Or looking at partnering with some of the private businesses downtown that have a need for parking and have some existing surface parking. And there's a lot of options there. I wouldn't, I wouldn't tie your hands, but I think we need to start looking more creatively on how we're gonna address downtown parking.
I didn't deliver some there, I'll deal with that.
Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll leave this to open to any of the staff, but I wanted to direct it to you, Joel, if I may. My first question is, I like the idea and I like definitely the sound of, of pulling back the political arm as much as possible. I talked about option three, of course, when we first brought this up, but, which is probably the least amount of government obviously involved, except for the fact our, our zoning would come into play. And I agree with you. I think that if we went that route, that we would want to make sure we have all of the zoning, the new zoning for the central business district that we would want. But my question to you is, would, one of the best ways to approach it, because I hear a lot of talk about how we're going to come up with a general framework of, of mixture of the different types of retail and parking. And it seemed to me that it would be even better if we were to take ideas from the potential private developers who are interested in this lot, to have them submit their ideas because they're the ones that have to sit down and pencil out whether this is gonna be in the black or not. And then give their, give their proposal to us without pictures of what they would build there if they purchased that lot. I mean, if we really want, if we want that control, I feel like honestly, many of the lots downtown, I'm wondering how many lots have been developed over the history of Rapid City and Sioux Falls for that matter, where the city wasn't involved, that it went from one private hands, some private hands to other private hands. So that was my other question is, was there any talk at Sioux Falls where there were lots that the city just sold and they were developed and they allowed their zoning to control the...
They were sold with, they went out for proposals on those as well. And it was also, part of the proposal was, tell us what you're gonna put there. And so part of work, how they decided who they're gonna sell it to was based on who was gonna go there. So it wasn't completely out of it.
Right.
But they had to buy the land and then give the proposal.
Well, and, correct. And I, I alluded to that, that we could have some control over it. The question is how enforceable would it be? And I could talk to them about how they structured that. But I will say the majority, and they were very adamant, is request for qualifications is how they wanted to do it and they wanted to maintain control. The interesting thing is on their parking lot, they actually were gonna structure it the opposite of how we were gonna structure it, where the, the private owner would own the land. And so there would have to be a transfer and then the city would get accountedized interest in the parking lot. They're gonna keep title the land and give the developer accountedized interest in the private areas. So I think that, that was a good idea. But that's what they do. I mean, once they figure out, okay, you've done these projects before, you've shown us that you have the ability to get the financing, that you have X amount of dollars and you only need to finance the rest and you can do this, that's when they start talking about, okay, what's your vision for this? What are you gonna do here? And does that gel with what we're doing? And, you know, that's what I think happened with the first developer that didn't work out is they, they made it past kind of the, the financial qualifications, they got talking about their vision for it, and their vision just wasn't gonna work. And so they didn't have any agreements in place yet, so they just withdrew and said, let's, you know, this isn't gonna work, let's agree to go our separate ways. Brought in another developer, liked their vision, their vision worked with their, and the staff and this, what they call a steering committee, which can include elected officials, citizens, staff members, but mostly it's, it seemed it was primarily composed of staff, so finance people, project manager, engineers, planners, legal. They negotiate and kind of come up with what, what the vision is and what, what they're gonna actually build. And then once it's ready and they draft the agreements and they negotiate all of this, then, once everybody on the steering committee and the developer has signed off on the agreement, then they break it, bring it forth for, to the council for approval. And when I talked, I was at the municipal attorney's meeting this year and I was talking to some of the other attorneys who've done these projects. That's, that's kind of what they did is somebody from the staff was a, essentially an owner's representative and had been given the authority by the elected officials to make decisions. And as far as design changes and things like that, behind the scenes, that didn't have to come to the council for approval. And they negotiated with the owner. They did not transfer, in these cases, they were transferring ownership after the building was completed, but before the transfer could occur, the city had to accept the project. So they had to sign off on it. So whatever you ended up with had to meet the city's approval. So, you know, that was your control. Rather than trying to write in specific square footages and things like that, they had the flexibility to, you know, to change the project or, or address market needs and things and design issues as the project was going on without everything coming back for approval. But at the end of the day, everyone knew that council and the city were gonna have to accept the building in order for the ownership transfer. So, you know, it seemed like it worked.
I just, I just fear that from a lot of the, the talk even tonight is that we, the government, want to, and I understand that this is a little bit better, a better direction, but I feel like we have this fear that if we sell this lot, that somehow the zoning's just not gonna get us what we want. When in reality, what we really want is a private developer to purchase that land and they determine, the private market determines what is best for that lot, not the city. And so I think that's been the mentality for a long time, which is why it's been sitting undeveloped for forty years, is that we want to, and I see that this is a new direction. And I think this is gonna be more successful because of the fact that we are pulling government back. But I still think that we need to even do more. I mean...
Well, one thing I'll say about, look, if, if we were just to sell that lot and somebody comes in and builds this great project, everybody's gonna say, obviously that was the way to do it. But I think we also need to recognize, we could sell that lot, have no control over it, and somebody builds something that everybody goes, wow, that is terrible, what a mistake we made. I think you've already heard and I think we already know that...
Can I stop you there though? Let me stop you there. Would our zoning keep that from happening today?
Not, no.
That they've built something and were like, oh my gosh?
No, I give you, I mean, Brett, as a planner for a downtown, if you want to go towards an urban area with mixed-use development, the biggest criticism he had was having a fast reaching with a surface parking lot right on one of the prime corners of downtown. And could that potentially happen? Yeah. So, you know, under the current zoning, now if we adopt some of the mixed-use zoning, it would probably encourage it more, but I don't know that it would prevent somebody from doing something that maybe we didn't all appreciate. You know, the other consideration you have to have is if you sell it, you've already been told whoever builds there is gonna have to address parking. And in order to address the parking issue, it's probably gonna be difficult to do without city help. So if you just sell it, the probably whoever buys it is gonna turn around and come back to us and ask for us to help them with the parking issue. The, the big killer for me when I looked at the options, and the reason I, I didn't tend to recommend or, or think there was as many pros to the just selling it, is if all our ramps were paid off and we didn't owe any money and we could sell that lot and just pocket the money, have an extra million dollars, even though it's just a million dollars per year, that's... even though it's just a million dollars per year, that's huge, a million dollars. But the reality is, if we sell it, we're probably going to have to take that money and either pay off the parking bond or use it to do something to defray that revenue loss. And so we're not going to, it's going to be a wash. We're basically, other than the fact the lot's going to develop, we're really not going to get anything out of that money. So...
So I just want, I'll finish with this, and maybe I'll come back later. But, so my understanding is this, that, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the new, this new process being proposed would ask for submissions from private developers with their ideas, and then we would choose from amongst those different ideas from private developers, the one that we think best fits our needs?
Correct. I mean, we would probably set up some general goals, but we wouldn't tell a developer, you need to have 50% retailer. We would just say, we would like to see a mixed use with maybe a hotel has been identified or some living space, general, general ideas. But then they would propose to us how they would, you know, they would give us the idea.
But why not leave that even more open? Why not, we still have control, why not, why not, why not not create that framework? Say, you have to, we would like to see, because if we say we would like to see, we know every one of those proposals is going to have that. So what I'm saying is, leave it even more open.
Sure.
Let the private, let the private developers study that area, do the things that private development does, and then we choose amongst the best proposals without saying, it needs to have this, it needs to have this, because that's, we're going right back down that road.
And if you were comfortable with that, you could do that and just say, just, we don't want to limit it. Just tell us what you're going to do and then try to select the best one, the one that seems more...
Yeah, and for Claire?
I will say that the gentleman gave us like three options on how you could do the RFQ. One is exactly what you're talking about. The other, the one that he wished that they would have done was to be more specific, because they, the city ended up having to spend a million dollars on a floor to separate some parking and living quarters by the way that it came in to them. So...
But that's assuming we would even need parking there, which we don't even know, right?
Well, I'm assuming we do, because we have pull there Monday through Friday, plus I have a waiting list to get in that lot for the leased parking. So there is a demand there currently, but who knows how it would end up with the development. But they kind of said steer away from that one before you get the whole hodgepodge, you know, sometimes pie in the sky ideas that really aren't feasible in some cases.
Thank you.
For just a little clarification, this is a, this is why we're here, to discuss this. And it's been a good discussion. There's a lot of words in that answer, but I think your question was answered in the affirmative, that private, the private industry will decide what to propose, and they will do that based on market studies, it rules not to. And our general guidelines could be as vague as consistent with the downtown master plan. Or it could be more restrictive in case we were encouraging us, you know, living a certain percentage of living or something. But I think all those can be, all that can be proposed at a later time. But I think that you're right. I think the beauty of it is, you get these proposals and you get to look and vet for yourself which is more in line with the needs of downtown, and that involves public input and reviewing of the plans and all that sort of thing. So I think we have a lot of leeway. Jerry Wright.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I was here in seventy-seven, seventy-four, came here and was, and Dan, I still have my hair, but it's white. And I agree with you. We need to get this done. And that's really where I'm at. I've shared my thoughts on this in writing to the council and to the staff. Firmly believe that we need to address not only that corner, but other issues that need to be done. And I think I totally agree with the RFQ process. I think it's a great idea, pre-qualify. I think it's an opportunity for us to solve more problems than just the parking and that lot. It's been, that was promised to the St. Joe Group, I believe, in seventy-seven, right? And so it's not just like the last 10 years. Complete that mission. And I think we need to rebuild some streets in downtown. They're in terrible shape. And I think the downtown lighting needs to be done and talk of moving the mission. I think we should take, that was not my original letter, but I think we should take the progressive look on meeting, the capital outlay needs, the infrastructure needs of the downtown area, and funding accordingly. And I passed my days. And I would like to know, can we get this done in three years? I think we can. With the right attitude and making the right decisions and letting the process occur, I think we can get it done in three years. And I think we need to, or sooner than we can. Thank you. I'm done.
Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steph, thanks for taking the time, and I appreciate, I think it's important that we do learn from other communities, and I appreciated your remarks and your expertise. Question for city attorney, if I may. When we sell a property, do we not, I'm thinking just as a homeowner, and when I bought my house, I live in a homeowners' association, and there were rules about even what paint colors I could have, just based on covenants. Can we not set conditions if we were to sell? Is that not an enforceable thing? I feel like this happens in real estate all the time, but I might, maybe I'm wrong.
I mean, there's certain, yeah, there's certain restrictions we could put on in covenants. Covenants generally, I think by statute, they only last 20 or 30 years. Whether or not we could go lock it down like this type of, I mean, obviously, most homeowners' groups and covenants have some design, but I probably need to do a little more research on what exactly we could do. But again, the dilemma you potentially have there is, you're setting up all these conditions, and then the first person that's interested in the lot comes in and goes, wow, I like 15 of these, but five I can't live with. And then you're trying to negotiate with them anyway. You don't, the concern would be whether that stifles anyone. But as a simple answer, could we probably put some conditions on the sale? Yeah.
So, you know, just in thinking about this, some things I think might be a good first step for us to take, to consider. And I'm not making a motion, just throwing it out there. Maybe we take 90 days to get proposals from developers of their ideas, and we don't put too many conditions on it, but maybe we hear, that, maybe, or maybe just some, or you guys were talking about RFQs, but maybe we would take that and say, what are some things developers both in and outside the area? I would like to know what kind of ideas are out there, I guess, for one. Personally, my preference, and I'm trying to be open-minded, but my preference is that the city does a parking study if our last one wasn't good enough. That was, George W. Bush was president, so it's been a while. But if we do a parking study to find out where parking should go, if there's a warrant for parking there, I like the idea of the city building and maintaining, or whatever the parking structure, on one parcel and selling off the other parcel and letting the development that we might have some control over go there, whether it's a hotel or whatever the case. We've talked about all sorts of things.
Maybe a spanner.
I'm not used to being so close to people. So that, that's, if I had a preference, it would be that we would build a parking ramp, that we would sell the other parcel off, that we would not necessarily get involved in the development of it, other than we have some options regarding who we sell to, what they're going to do, that sort of thing. The other thing is, the mayor has mentioned that this project, he has received a call about once a week for quite a while. Is that right, Mayor?
Yeah, it's slowed down now.
Okay. It tells me that no incentive is needed to develop this lot, other than maybe parking. So I'm not sure we need to necessarily look at a TIF for this particular lot or not, because it seems like the incentive develop is there because the market dictates it. We don't have to beg people to develop there, because I think people, or developers, or investors, better said, are going to look at that and say, that's a great opportunity, especially if they have a parking plan. If we have a parking plan, I think that's a huge draw. So those are just some general comments, I guess, and kind of just where I'm at as a starting point. Again, I'm willing to listen to ideas and do what's right. I like, we have a zoning plan, maybe there are design guidelines. I know we have a rockstar in Sarah Hansel. I have no doubt we could have excellent design guidelines that are not too imposing, but that complement what we have. So just as a starting point, that's kind of where I am. Maybe, maybe I'm wrong, and, but I'd love to kind of hear what the rest of our council and maybe even some staff members think of what I just mentioned. I'll yield the floor.
Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I came here with an open mind tonight, and I'm really not, still haven't formed a preconceived decision, one way or the other, of the five options that were presented to us. And I've been listening very intently to all the discussions. Want to thank staff for going over to Sioux Falls and at least researching some alternate methods that have been used by other cities. But in so doing, listening to the conversations around here, I have a couple of questions. And the first one, I'd like to direct to our city attorney, if that's okay, Mayor?
Yes.
Joel, the city of Sioux Falls is a charter form of government, and we are an automatic form of government. Does that pose any problems? And specifically, what came to my mind was your owner at risk or the person that represents the city with the city council giving control for this person to make those decisions without coming back to our city council? Does that form any issues if the city council were to turn over those decision-making?
No, I mean, you're not turning it over to that person. They answer to the executive branch. They would answer to the mayor, whoever the mayor delegates to manage that, essentially that project. So at Sioux Falls, there's a project manager designated in the executive branch, so that owner's representative is getting their directive from the project manager. Now, we would have to probably designate some sort of project manager, whether that be planning or public works. But that person is who would direct the work. So you're not completely, you know, granting to this person all your authority. I mean, they are coming back and they are answering to you, just like an owner. The problem is, you know, normally when you have an owner, it's a single person, so you get your marching orders from that person. When your owner is a city council, it's a little hard to get your marching orders from 10 people who probably don't agree what the answer to the question you have is. So that's why necessarily it's turned over to the executive branch. And we do have, the mayor is the CEO of the city, so, no, I don't see that as being a problem.
Do you foresee any problems between the two different forms of government with what you learned on the trip to Sioux Falls? Is there anything that as an automatic form of government, we need to be concerned with? I believe you mentioned our zoning, and we can handle that, that's within our purview. We can handle transactions, whether we choose to sell the lot or whether we choose to go out for RFQs or RFPs or whatever process we choose to decide, we can handle all that. Are there any things, any item that comes to mind that may be of a concern with an automatic form of government?
No. And frankly, whenever I talk to my counterpart in Sioux Falls, he says that the legislature has ratcheted down the home rules so much that it's not even any different. I don't know that I agree with him on that, but they have, I think Sioux Falls is just mad they ratcheted down all the taxing powers. But, no, I don't see any major legal issues as we were discussing these processes with them. There might be a few hurdles that we have to come over, but I didn't sense there was anything that would be insurmountable.
Nothing that would be of a time delay or anything else if we choose to go down one of these paths?
No. I don't think the time delay would be from anything related to, you know, the automatic form of government. I mean, I think we have to give this some more thought and really lay out how we're going to get from point A to point B. We need to do some more detailed analysis of that, and I think that's on a staff level. You know, that's going to take some time, but I think that's a parallel path to the zoning and the design criteria and things like that. I know there's a desire, I live in Rapid City, I'm one of your constituents, I feel it. There's a desire to do something there. It has been too long. However, you know, we've made some missteps, and we might have to take a step back and make sure we do this right this time in order to get it done, rather than just doing it fast. However, I would think within the next couple of months, we could have an outline of a plan and start implementing it and hopefully, you know, have somebody selected and agreements in place by sometime next year, I would think. And then hopefully construction soon after. I mean, if you do this right, the goal will be even, even once you have the agreements in place, you'll know enough and be far enough along that you're going to have a higher confidence level that it's going to actually get built. Because I know we have agreements in place and it's still going to get built. So the point is, this process is trying to get to that point, but having a higher level of assurance it's going to get built.
Thank you. Just based on the conversation and being on the city council for the last four years, I do like the concept of the RFQ, going out for a review or a submission of qualifications and taking a look at those people that are submitting, that have basically show a track record of doing these types of projects in the past, and then having that decision based on their past historical, plus their financial setting that's not made public or anything else, but just knowing with confidence that whoever is selected has a track record of getting to the finish line on a project. I think that would go a long way, and as has already been stated, taking the politics out of it and really making a decision on letting the experts submit what they do best and letting the experts run with it. So that's what I'm hearing tonight, and I think that's what I'm in favor of, based on the conversation that I've heard tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Right, Esther.
Thanks, Mayor. Just quickly, I have a Sarah question. Sarah, we talked about the master plan and how that changes the face of the zoning and stuff downtown. What is your timeline of bringing forward some of the zoning changes that would impact this project?
I'm hoping to bring them forward by May-June is our timeframe. The first step that we had to do was to take an inventory of all the parcels. There's hundreds of them downtown. If you're going to go in and start changing, you know, this use was allowed, now we're shifting it, or we're adding new uses, we just want to have a really clear sense of legally for people and how they use their property, what impacts those are having. So that database took a couple of months to put together and finishing that up now. And now outlining, okay, what is going to be the structure, what is it that is working well in our existing code that we want to carry forward, what's not working well. So it's just kind of how to format that and then how to write it. And we'll be collaborating more and more with the attorney's office and with the current planning division that's going forward. So a couple of months, we're, it is top priority in our office.
Thank you. Well, I think that would work well, because I'm convinced that RFQ is the way to go, but I think two things have to happen. I think, you know, while we're working towards the structure of our organization as to how we handle the RFQ, the deep flood and the size of it, I think that has to happen. And I love Jason Solomon, and his enthusiasm, we get people to tell us. But it costs a lot of money for people to put these projects together. And I think one of the things that, you know, we have a history too, we've played a part in what's happened there. And I think people are going to want to see that we've got our ducks in line, and that we're really committed to a process before people are going. So I think we need to work towards the zoning and get our ducks in a row, so that, so that when people know that they're going to spend the money to put forward a plan, present an RFQ, that they know the process, the process, approving process, let's say like what Sioux Falls has, has been put in place and there's a commitment by this local government to try to do that with the best intent possible. There's no motion. But I really think that that, from what I've heard tonight, you know, and I just think that that's kind of the way we want to go. I think if Sarah's got the zoning stuff on the front burner, we look towards that. And so, Mr. Mayor, we try to form our group as to, as that to be a branch and however, to be able to work towards that. I think that's what we should do. How you do?
And I'll go to the senior most member of Ward Two, Ricky North.
Thank you, Mayor.
More senior than in a couple of ways. First of all, just a few comments, is that I agree with everyone that we must take the politics out of this. That'll be the first step to do that. One of the things that I've heard staff talk about several times is, in their day-to-day duties that they do, they won't have time to add any more projects to their list. I'm looking at Dale Tech as well. The reason I'm saying that is because the idea that was brought up tonight was the project manager. project manager. I'm thinking that maybe that should be one of the first things we do, take a serious look at our project manager. Some other things that we continue to look at is throughout the United States, there is different P3s and I'll call them public-private partnerships as P3s. They are holding workshops in various cities throughout the United States. And this would be one of the areas that maybe our staff or this project manager could attend so they get more familiar with how this is to take place. So I'm even thinking on a higher scale than just what we are even trying to do tonight to learn more about P3s. We can also go and use these workshops or conferences to learn more about what the leading developers do throughout the United States. There's financial and legal advisors. There's also contractors and engineers that attend these P3 conferences. And then it would help us discern which way the project should go here in Rapid City. In addition to that, there's another group out there called Performance-Based Building Coalition. It's a nonprofit organization whose mission is to catalyze the use of P3s for public buildings and assisting public officials, which this may fall into that area. I call them the P2BC. We'll offer municipalities an opportunity for the P2BC to come host a day-long workshop here in Rapid City. And they can also help us understand what P3s are all about. I came out of the world of EPA and all of that and I wasn't used to using acronyms, so I try to get acronyms down.
We're going to need a guidebook.
Yes. We've done that. You've also heard that the developers here locally have come to the city of Rapid City to talk about it. I've talked to a couple of developers that are interested in doing something downtown here in Rapid City. I'm also very supportive of the RFQ process. I was looking at the RFP, but this takes it to a different level of even going higher level, if you will, raising the bar, if you will, to take it out of the area, even taking it more so out of the area of politics. This also gives us an opportunity to have a whole new fresh canvas and maybe even in some areas that we don't have to reinvent the wheel because these folks have already done this. So why reinvent the wheel when these experts are already doing this? That's all I've got at this point. And it seems like staff has either read my comments or I read their comments when they went down to Sioux Falls because I've pretty much come up with the same conclusions that they have, is more investment in ourselves to do more training ourselves or understanding what a P3 is.
Mr. Mordi.
Thank you, Mayor. I like what Richie said and it's reminding us that the speakers that we've had before us, the meeting that we've talked to, and then the report that we got aligned a couple of things that crossed over, so I think that makes it part of this process. And one was to come up with a process, not the design, that on both sides of speaker as well as what we found out with facts and figures from our staff. The other one was to let the city design be known to developers or the builders or the RFQ this, because if we don't create some kind of a criteria list or a design and we just say, well, go spend a lot of money and tell us what you want to put here, we may not get the kind of quality work or what we're looking for. We really would be just, you know, having them thrown a hat with nothing in it to allow us to see nothing but their facts. Okay, they can afford to work on this property, but can they provide us with the kind of criteria that we really want that fits the downtown? And one of the Sioux Falls statements made was, make sure you design guidelines to fit your location so it is part of that process. That way it trims down what you're going to get that's going to want to qualify on the RFQ. And I think the RFQ is a fantastic direction. Sioux Falls made a couple of mistakes and so they shared that with our staff as well. They said, here's what not to do or learn from our mistakes. And I think we could take that to build the RFQ and also to build what we want to do on our design criterias. And we've got the excellent staff that knows what they're doing to put that together. And then another great piece was when Joel was speaking about putting that selective or executive committee in order to do the process. And it made me think of the vision funds process that we just went through. And we really went through it in such a non-political way. It's what we're talking about doing today. That $73 million worth of project requests, they tailored it down. We never really gave them a design, so we got everything. We got everything under the sun and ended up with 25 that came in and did their application process. But, you know, when it came down to the committee, they're the ones that had to build a criteria and then put it before us with their best of the best. Maybe we can eliminate having everything under the sun, but actually do the design guidelines and then allowing that process to filter through the committee like Sioux Falls did. And then once it comes to us, they've had more education than we could ever dream of. I mean, we can read and Google search everything that we want to do on P3s and everything else, but I think they would be the ones that really would be giving guidelines on what we're looking for and using all of the experience of other cities that have done this. So I would love to see something like, I don't think this is going to take time. I think we have an opportunity to look at how we can move this particular portion of it forward and get the RFQs out once it's there and see if we can't get something drilled down to what can be accepted. And if we get the politics out by doing those that are going to come back with what they figure is the best of the best for us, then we should consider that as the option that we need to review. It's going to get a better political world and put something right on there. And they're the specialists, so if we get the designs pieces from the builders and investors, remember there's probably investors out there too, so when they all come together, then I think we're going to get what we need. If we try to do this and do some P3 training and all of that, it's going to be scattered and I think we can really bring it down now. I think this is the way to do so and they're already halfway there. I've got one question if I can, Mayor. We hadn't talked about concession parking and maybe this has been in some of the things that have been reviewed in the past, but concession parking is many times by, you know, companies and that's what they do for a living in cities. They do the concession work and you get a little skim off of it, but they take the risk, they know what they're doing, so their risk is lower and they find a way to make a profit. So I don't know if we've looked into concession options. I know at the airport, they roll over concession rates. They bring that up also to an RFP process and they make money or else they wouldn't come back over and over again for others wanting to come in. So it's another option, maybe we keep talking about, maybe we've got to do all of this, but perhaps we can either do it in concession work or maybe look for companies that would like to take the parking project on. And it could be as small as one more parking space or we could do an entire parking program, just like we always talk about with the parking manager. Get us out of the parking business and put it for somebody who does that for a living. Another thought.
Darla Drew.
Yeah, I have a question for Sarah, please. I remember when this last project was talked about a lot, there were a lot of concerns about height restrictions. So do we have that in the zoning that you're looking at? Because I know that there were people that, oh, if it's this tall, you know, it's going to cast a shadow over the other side of the street, you know, it'll always be one sunny side of the street and the rest will be in shadow and Alex Johnson didn't really like the idea, you know, so what are the height restrictions?
When you think about a regulatory framework for height, there's two different things to keep separate, they're related. But one would be the what's actually allowed in the zoning districts. So currently in Central Business, there's no height restriction, so you can build as high as you want in the Central Business district. However, the standards for historic preservation do rule in that area in the sense that you have to go through the process to determine adverse effects to surrounding historic properties.
Right.
Now, that process is more prescriptive in saying you have to go through this process and there's incentives built into making the better decisions for the good of the historic district as opposed to just kind of drawing the process out. And I wasn't here at the time that that was conducted for the previous development proposal. But I think in setting up some goals for what we want from this project, I think, you know, keeping the historic nature of that area intact would be an appropriate goal to have. So I think ultimately the tower was 15 stories that was originally. Who knows if the new proposal that would come forward would be that tall or not? I mean, it's hard to say, but I think you can be, you can consider the historic rules and you can also try to increase density and I don't think those have to be at odds with one another.
What's a historic preservation rule? I mean, what is that?
Well, it's basically, it has to do with what you were saying, where the building is too tall and it starts to encroach on the buildings next to it.
Is there a story requirement? Is it 10?
No. It's context-specific. You wouldn't apply the same thing in every situation. It would depend on how the site was oriented, it would depend on the height of the historic structure and nature that you're.
Do we wait till we get the design plans or, I mean, at what point does that come in where the historic officials make some requirements of how big this is going to be? I'll tell us.
They don't. First, let me say that.
Okay, they don't, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we're not going to let them dictate what happens, right? But, look, we need to identify that there is probably going to be some sort of historic review for this.
Okay.
And once the developers on notice of that, they should, you know, architects, designers should have some experience with that and know what the rules are, okay? So I don't think that factors in right away, but when we start discussing a design or a specific, once we've selected somebody and start discussing that, then they're going to need to factor that in. And then once you have a design that's ready, then they would take it to the Historic Preservation Commission for Review, just like any other permit downtown.
Okay, so when you were talking about, so I'm going to go to Joel now.
Okay.
At what point does the council see, you know, any design or, you know, when do we get in the process again? Do we choose the RFQs? Do we just go through those? And do we make that choice? Is it someone else?
No.
No, we don't.
The staff of the steering committee, you would approve the agreement with the developer. Once the developer had been selected and all the details had been worked out, you would then review those details and the agreement and approve that. And that's when the public would see it as well. I could comment on the project and whether they thought the deal that had been made was good or bad or however.
I like it. I mean, I like the RFQ process that you laid out. I thought it was really interesting and a new way of looking at it for me. So then the owner's rep or the voice of the city, I see that as a really important kind of a person to be part of this because, I mean, you need somebody on the project looking at it at all times, you know? When I was at the doll and they were building the doll, there was always problems going on with the design that just was off from what we told them to do unless we had somebody protecting our interests. Sidewalks, sprinklers, whatever it is, you know, we always have to have somebody outside. You can't do it, you can't do it, we're not going to do it. So we have to have somebody, I think, there to make sure that this is going along as we see fit, you know? And that's that person's job. And as Lisa brought up, you know, I don't know if we want to be in the parking structure business. I may have said this too. I could see maybe a very small structure going in here, 130, 150 places. We know Rapid Cityans don't like to walk, so I could see parking structures, you know, maybe a deal with the Assurant parking lot, you know, the area across from the Adova Hotel. And we've got the parking lot of Black Hills Corp. I know that the Y is looking at that, I'm not really sure where that is, but, you know, we do have some choices downtown. We don't have to build a 500 structure, a 500 stall structure where people are going to have to walk a long distance. We have some choices downtown where we can be smaller structures. I think that it would make more sense for the mentality of people in Rapid City. And we're going to have to be really careful with that anyway because I was on the parking committee during George W. Bush. And we did, you know, make these decisions about the parking downtown, you know, being free and the parking on the outer areas being more expensive. Why? I think we did it for tourism, you know, and now we've done the three-hour thing so that the employees, it seems like we're never doing this for money, you know? We're never looking at this as an actual funding source for making decisions for our tourism, for our employees, you know, for people that want to jump out and shop. But I think that we need to maybe look at our parking as a funding source. And if we're going to do it, then let's do it right and make sure that works for the citizens of Rapid City. So I've got to say the 3P that you were talking about makes sense to me. I'd like to see something along that line. But I'm also going to remain open and when Steve Loretty was saying that, you know, open it up, see what comes up, you know, I don't know. Could be an aquarium. I don't know what it's going to be, but it could be something really fun and something that none of us have thought about. And, you know, I just think that it really leaves our options a little bit more open and especially with the parking, we don't have to just pigeonhole ourselves into a really large structure. Maybe we should look at smaller structures throughout town. That's all I have to say.
Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion to direct staff to establish a process and a guide for us to move forward that we can maybe work on from there. So that would include, you know, items such as the parking, such as the RFQ process. A lot of the things that you brought from Sioux Falls, I'd like to have a starting document and a process from the staff, if I could get a second.
Second. Clarify the motion again.
Direct staff to establish a process for the development of the St. Joe and Sixth lot.
Okay, and the second was? Steve Loretty or Jerry? Okay.
And if I may retain the floor.
Sure.
I make that motion because I do want to empower our staff. I think we have a great staff and I think there's something to be said there. A word of caution on that though. I agree we should not politicize this as much as possible. And I'm hopeful that our staff won't be like us elected officials and politicize it either, that they also will keep, you know, an open mind and go through the process. Just as elected officials, as we have historically done this, we've said that it's been politicized in the past. I think that's very true and a fact that, you know, you can't deny. But I would also just say with it happening behind the scenes and not as much with the public knowledge upfront, that that lack of clarity of the process could lend itself to complaints that it's not as transparent as it could be. So I would just say if we have a clear process, the council's on board, there's good effective communication, the public eventually does have input because this is the public's land after all. The council who represent the public have, you know, a vote obviously on what ends up happening. I think that is important too. So just, I do believe in empowering the staff. Just the difference between an elected official and the staff is the elected officials were hired by the people to represent them and so we should empower the staff just hopefully, not that this staff would ever do that, but we have all kinds of new people all the time and hopefully we won't politicize this process in all angles. And that would just be my word of caution and I'm not saying that this staff would do that. It's just to empower the staff more means it's a little less in a public forum that these discussions take place, so there's a lot of trust there. And so I think we have a very trustworthy staff. But I do want to just put that out there because I'm certain there are members of the public who are my boss that are thinking that and I'm certain that they would like that mentioned as we go down this process. And with that, I'll yield the floor.
Okay, so the motion, as I understand it, is to direct staff to find a process for the development of the lot, the 500 block of St. Joseph Street and deliver the proposed process to the city council. Is that correct? Is that correct?
I believe so, yeah.
I have a question considering that motion.
Okay, you have a question? Go ahead.
So before coming into this meeting, there were five options on the table. Are we directing staff to go back over and review those five options to come back with a recommendation? Or are we saying that we are looking at the RFQ and we're asking staff to go back out and prepare a process to bring back to the council?
That's right.
I'm a little confused on what we're trying to vote on here.
If I may have the floor to clarify the motion. We, I'm not asking the staff to come and give us the five options to choose from today, but they have come and they said that their research in Sioux Falls said that there's a process that you have to establish that includes the RFQ process, which I think is outstanding. So I would like to see that process in writing so that we know what our steps are, steps one, steps two, step three, to getting to where we eventually land.
So it's kind of an open-ended motion to direct staff to develop a new process based on the information more than likely that they have learned from Sioux Falls and there may be time to investigate other jurisdictions who've had similar developments and then bring whatever process they develop back to council for review. Jerry, ready?
I'd like to ask my distinguished counsel on Board Three to amend his motion to reflect that we request an RFQ. Why you go first. And if I may, that's a comment, a request, not a motion. So I retain the floor. And I'm going to use a P3, it's called PDQ. If we asked and studied and talked about it forever, we're kicking the can down the road. They went there and they found the process, they came back with the RFQ. And all the RFQ is going to give them the ability to select who can do it, our choices and the decisions and how it's going to be done, will be handling the process in between now and then and later. But I do think to get a mark on the calendar to work and see progress, we need an RFQ. And we handle the rest, we fill it in between. So I like that motion. Do you mind it?
I'm not sure that staff has what they need right now to do that.
Wait a minute, we've got two months?
No. In terms of understanding what the whole RFQ process is and how to put it together and then thereby locking themselves into that one option, I think that's likely what will be presented anyway. But Pauline, want to make a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say that to have that ready by that timeframe just would concern me because I really do think before we can put an RFQ out there, we need to know what the current needs are for that facility or that mod as far as parking is concerned. And I think it needs to be a whole comprehensive kind of outside the box thinking, where can we do little projects where the parking demand is there now and will be in the future instead of just saying, "Give us an RFQ."
So is it going to be another 40 years? I'm sorry.
No. No.
I think everybody knows.
Well, I'd be a little sarcastic, but you know, it's.
Well, we work for the mayor. He works for the people and he's, I think, understands that it's a process and I don't think he's going to let us put it in the bottom drawer and forget about it. I mean, but arbitrary deadlines aren't going to necessarily help the process either. We need to do this right.
And I can honestly, I can start working on looking for a consultant to do a parking analysis, see what kind of prices we're looking at. If it's under the $25,000 that I'm authorized to sign, get that started.
And that's part of the process too, on the RFQ.
And I think no matter what we do, we still need that study, whether you sell the land or you develop it together or what you do, you need that study to know what direction you need to be going in.
I agree.
Here, just a quick comment. What Pauline is suggesting here is what I've been advocating for some time is to have some outside group take a look at this all along. So this, I believe, is the start of direction that the mayor has control over and giving some guidance to the staff to, you know, to think outside the box.
Go for it. Thank you. Any other comments on the motion?
I've got a question.
Yes.
So with a motion that's, it's an open motion, it's very loose and doesn't have anything stuck on it, which is a good thing, but does that give you enough to work off of based on, I'm sure, what you've learned from Sioux Falls? You're going to bring that forward, maybe get a sample of the RFQs, all the things that you're going to need with this motion in order to move you forward? Anything missing?
How about a date? Let's do, is that possible?
I don't think we're in a position to put a date on it yet. I mean, I think we can expect updates or if you want updates, we can let you know what we're doing. And if you're not happy with that, then you can decide how to proceed. But I think it's tough to, might make it great, give everybody a warm fuzzy to know, okay, April 10th, we're coming back. But my guess is April 10th, we're coming back to asking for more time at this point. I mean, let us, let us try to put together a process that works. I mean, the executive branch is capable of getting a project completed. Let's try to give us the chance to do that.
Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. Seeing on the council for nearly six years now, I've got a lot of history with the project that is no longer happening. I like what I'm hearing and I thank you for taking the initiative to take steps to Sioux Falls and research what's working and learn from other people's mistakes in addition to our own. My comments are more so for my colleagues. Some of us have been around for a while and I think there has been a tendency in the past to not let the mayor do his job. Are we going to set up this process? I like what I'm hearing. I would love to de-politicize it. And really, are we going to allow the mayor to do his job and not have a bunch of deputy mayors running around trying to micromanage the deal? Because, hey, you know, we've seen it. We've seen it. So I think it's really time to dig deep if we're going to do it right and we're going to go in a different direction. You know, we need to check ourselves up a bit too and think about some of the things that have been done in the past and let the process work. So if we can agree on a process, let it work, step back and just hands off, pay attention, but not get in there and try to micromanage it. I'll yield.
Jerry, do you have something else?
Well, my sincere desire is to get something done promptly, promptly as possible. That's my whole, that's what I'm saying. And I think we all do. And I just fear that open-ended issue needs to be addressed, but I think the deadline always works. You know, I was taught and trained and believed if you put the date down and perform to that date, I think it needs to be reasonable. So I will accept Jason's motion. Whereas he's a deadline, it's a lot harder.
Okay. Brad?
Yeah. I'm going to support the motion. It is a little open-ended, but what I see is that, what I think staff, what I think we're going to see staff going back to is, is, you know, if the road map is to an RFQ, here are the things that we, I mean, there's going to be some consultants to help us that we're going to have to hire and appropriate money for to help us be along the way so that we know even how to write that RFQ to meet our needs in my mind. So, I mean, I see kind of an outline of who we need to hire to help get us to the spot where we can even write the darn RFQ as far as consulting. I mean, to understand our parking, to have our zoning, to be real close to having our zoning dialed in, so. So I think there's work along the yellow brick road. So there'd probably be some benchmarks.
Yeah.
Jerry? I know this addresses solely the parking and property and so forth, but I'm not that mind. Right, I do hope that very shortly we would have discussion on including some of the other needs of the downtown area to include the downtown lighting and the desire to move the mission to another location and the need to repair some of the streets that are in horrible condition of size because of the dirt. So I hopefully see discussion of them. So, thank you.
Any other comments on the motion? Okay, I'm just going to make a couple. I've been taking notes here. I'm just going to run through these and then we'll vote and be done. Understandably, we're all carrying a little baggage from the failed project on that lot. You can hear it with everybody who talks. And it's nothing personal. I do it too. There's been a lot of trauma, a lot of pressure from this project. I'm not sure anybody, I'm not sure, I've been asked more about a single subject since I've been in office than that development. So I think this conversation's good, maybe a little bit of a catharsis, maybe a little, I think a good process is going on here. So thanks for that. The RFQ leading to an RFP puts private industry in the driver's seat momentarily while they make a proposal. The design criteria and the downtown master plan is an insurance policy that we're not going to waste anyone's time and money proposing something. There should be no unreasonable proposals that come in from this project. We could very well include solving the parking dilemma in the process to give options either to propose a parking solution with or without private or, I mean, this is all, this could all be part of the eventual RFP. I would just tell us to take a breath and don't be overly motivated based on the past 10 or 11 years. That is history and we're taking a baby step forward today. And I don't believe staff will be delayed in investigating a process. If it were me, I would think going to one agency and learning about them and then cutting and pasting their process might be a little premature. So I think we will need to take a look at some other success stories around the region and see if there's anything else we can learn. The design criteria, I think, there was a question about covenants and protecting the design and all that type of thing. I would suspect that any future design criteria put on downtown structures would require that the structure be consistent with the type of architecture of downtown. A parking study could very well be the first significant step that needs to be taken in this. I wouldn't be sure today that we could seek requests for proposals not knowing what a parking issue is. And just, I'm just trying to predict here that when we get a parking study and when we approve a parking plan, that parking plan is going to have to be implemented and city's going to have to take any criticism that is coming our way because the design is completely backwards. There's going to be some feathers ruffled in the new parking. It's not meant to torture anybody. It is meant to get us current with the times and put us in a position with revenue to be able to pay for the services that we provide having to do a parking. And with the processes outlined tonight, there may be a little less transparency than what some would care to see, but ultimately, these are private dollars being spent for a private project. City's sitting on land that may be valued from a half a million to a million dollars, but very likely 10 or 20 times that will be spent on that lot, private dollars. So I think we're going on the wrong, I think we're going on the right path. And Sioux Falls, although they are on the wrong side of the state, they have shown themselves to be a very professional, very helpful and very valuable partner to Rapid City. And every time we have asked and have bent over backwards to try to help us, and that advice and help is very much appreciated. So I'm glad we're at this stage and this is the beginning. So, thank you for all of that. Motion on the floors to staff bring back the process. Council, all in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Motion in the second to adjourn. Any objection? We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.